I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Elgin County Community School Board of Education on Monday, May 22nd. SFPs, please rise to pledge allegiance in the moment.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
So we have several recognitions and presentations tonight. Do you want to pick it up?
Sure, yep. Start out first on the agenda is the Community Mental Health Writing Contest winners. And I see we have Adrian Lockenbacher here tonight.
Hi, ow.
We have the half of Community Mental Health. And so Adrian, I will turn it over to you.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. My name is Adrian Lockenbacher. I'm a coordinator over at St. Clair County Community Mental Health. And I am a Muscrat as well, too. So I'm very, very excited, like goosebumps excited, to be here for the second year of row honoring our community and honoring our Muscrats. For those of you that don't know, St. Clair County Community Mental Health serves a lot of individuals in St. Clair County intellectual disabilities, mental health, substance use, all walks of life. And what we always like to say is that mental health impacts everyone and how important it is to take care of our mental health, take care of each other, and really be able to provide education, knowledge, understanding for our youth, which I think is shown so beautifully here tonight in some of the things that our youth from this community has done. So every year, St. Clair County Community Mental Health has a Creative Arts Contest. What the goal is, is to encourage student participation, to raise awareness about mental health concerns. And this year's theme was really cool because it was "Keep Going, Keep Growing." So for elementary students, we have a bookmark contest. For middle schoolers, we have a writing contest with several categories. And for our high schoolers, we have art contests. And I like to say that Elgin Act dominated again this year, which I was very proud of as I saw all of the awards. And I didn't vote, but I definitely had my favorites, and many of them were Elgin Act. As you'll see for the board members. And for community members, we brought extras. We actually brought a copy of copies of our books. And you'll see all of our individuals from the school that are recognized today, they're all represented in this book. All of the book has our writing winners, our bookmark winners, and a lot of our art contest winners. And I would encourage every single one of you to grab a book. I will send down more because there's actually more folks here that I thought all the families will receive copies. And it's just beautiful artwork and beautiful, beautiful writings by a lot of students in our community in St. Clair County. And it's very inspiring, so I encourage all of you to take a copy. And what I want to do is go ahead and recognize students from the Elgin Act School District that turned in submissions and that all did very well in place, so I'm going to call them up individually for recognition. Ashton, this lap. Is Ashton here? Alright. Alright, Ashton. So Ashton submitted art, and I'm going to do the whole show, everybody, unless you'd like to show it. Beautiful piece of artwork, one of my favorites, and I didn't even know it was an Elgin Act student. And really, the theme "Keep Going, Keep Growing" was just represented beautifully here, so I'll let you hold it, Ashton. So Ashton won honorable mention in the high school art contest for the entry "Keep Going, Keep Growing." Ashton is receiving the artwork Framed Back, which was also displayed at our annual awards breakfast for community viewing. There was roughly 600 people there that saw your artwork, which was wonderful. You'll receive a certificate. So here's a certificate for you. And a copy of the book for you as well, too. And then you'll get more copies of the book now, too. So congratulations. Awesome. (Applause) The lovely Ashton artwork is actually shown on page 25 of the book, which is wonderful. Harlan Christie. Okay. So Harlan, very excited. The grand prize winner of the middle school writing contest for the entry "A Funny Feeling." So our grand prize winner, which deserves definitely a round of applause. (Applause) Harlan, you may have received your certificate, a copy of our Creatives Book, and a check for $250. (Applause) Harlan's work is actually featured on page 10 of the book. Olivia Petrov. Olivia. Okay, Olivia. Wonderful. Olivia was also a first-place winner, first-place fiction winner of the middle school writing contest for her enthralling "Beautifully Broken." Olivia is receiving her certificate, a copy of her Creative Arts Book, and a check for $100. So congratulations. (Applause) And we have more. Riley Kowalski. Riley, wonderful. Third place for our fiction category of the middle school writing contest for her entry "Hidden from Sunlight." Riley's receiving a certificate and a copy of the Creatives Arts booklet, and there's also a check in there for $50. So congratulations. (Applause) Kylie Strzezinski. Kylie took third place for our nonfiction winner of the middle school contest for her entry "Moving On." Kylie's receiving her certificate, copy of our Creative Arts Book, and a check for $50. It was great. (Applause) Eliza Cameron. So we had poetry category as well as fiction and nonfiction, and Eliza won first place. She was our first-place poetry winner for the middle school writing contest for the entry "I'm Just a Girl." Eliza's receiving a certificate, a copy of our Creative Arts Book, and a check for $100. Congratulations. (Applause) And Sophia Johnson. Also a poetry entry. Sophia has won second-place poetry winner of the middle school writing contest for the entry "Silence is Beauty." Sophia is receiving a certificate, copy of our Creative Arts Book, and a check for $70. (Applause) You know, there's a lot of writing and art contests out there and a lot of different things, but I tell you, when you have to write about a topic like mental health and feelings and emotions and own life experiences, I can't give these youth enough credit for the wonderful and amazing job they did. I read everything cover to cover several times. I actually took a look at it again and read each one before I came here today, and I can tell you it was inspired and it moved me as well, too. So very, very proud of all of you. Fantastic, fantastic work. I'd also like to thank and recognize the teachers who encouraged the students participate. We appreciate their support and efforts to ensure that this is a successful St. Clair County Community Mental Health endeavor. We'd also like to extend a very special thank you to Ms. Mary Ruhlman. (Applause) She encourages her students to participate clearly. She did a fantastic job last year with inspiring all the students. The same this year as well, and it shows in the quality of their work and the passion for what they do, so we deeply appreciate Mrs. Ruhlman. A significant number of our entries for the medical school writing contest, like you can see, were from Elgin Act. We have gone to other school board meetings, and we've only been texting out with one or two. We're lucky to be here and do all of these tonight, which is awesome. And again, we knew, we know that this was due to Mrs. Ruhlman's encouragement and her work with the students. So we thank you, we thank the district, we thank the families of all of the students as well, too, for their inspiration and their support. And again, congratulations, students. (Applause)
Could we ask the winners to walk through and shake our hands, too? Come on.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Yeah, if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to grab a snack on your way out, or we've got a few more recognitions if you'd like to stay for that, too. Or you're welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting.
Mr. Clark, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do have extra copies of the book. It's in the back. Go ahead and read these for family members and community members, too. Thank you.
Next up, we have, tonight, we are honoring Emily Tenniswood, who is, comes to us in partnership with the RISA, and Emily's been our college advisor. We've been fortunate enough to partner with RISA for quite a few years now to have a college advisor position. However, those positions are only as useful and as good as the people that you bring in and do them. Emily was presented by several, several people, board members, teachers, and said, you know, we got to make sure that when Emily's leaving that we recognize her in some way because she's done great things. That's the first time that's happened with a college advisor. A lot of times, they come in, they do their job, they do great things for our kids, and kind of walk out the door, and nobody kind of says anything about it. And Emily had a lot of support out there when people wanted to make sure she was recognized. So Emily, I'm going to call you up, and I'm also going to call Mr. Melrose to talk a little bit about Emily's position.
Absolutely. So we, like I said, we've been lucky enough to have the college advisor position since I've been here at the high school, which is, it really is, it's a very positive thing for the kids because it ties them not only to college, but whatever they're going to be doing with post-high school, that they help lead the students and direct them. But I can tell you, we were lucky enough to get Emily sent out last year, and she's been with us for the last two years. And the one great thing about Emily is she's always smiling, she's always happy, she's always upbeat. They said the kids, they're always welcome in her office if you always walk by. There's always two, three kids in there, they're working on different things, they're working on college applications, they're working on scholarship applications, they're asking her questions. She's organizing field trips to colleges, organizing field trips to work fairs, all of these things. And again, she's just been, she was super, from day one, when she came to our staff, she came in with a positive energy, she just, she rolled right in, took the job, and we are very sad to be up to losing her. She's going to do great things, and we just thank you for everything you've done for the kids. Yeah. (Applause)
Okay, next, we have Nicole Degowski here tonight to talk a little bit about the classroom project. It's something that we've talked about at the Board of Education before, but I really want, it's kind of, and I think Nicole will probably tell you the same, from where it started to kind of what it's morphed into, it's just really kind of taken on a different life of where we thought. I think it started with the classroom project, we're doing a couple little things, and people in the community have really kind of got behind it. So I asked Nicole to come tonight and talk a little bit about the project, and so Nicole.
It's turned into something so big I had to write about it because I knew I'd forget something. So thank you for inviting me here. This outdoor classroom project trail has started with my fifth-grade students. In the fall, we ventured out there to get creative with our writing, but we were saddened by the benches were overgrown by weeds, and there was graffiti everywhere, there were fallen trees blocking the trails, we couldn't even walk all the way around. The kids said we should do something about this, so we headed back to our indoor classroom, and we did something about it. We wrote about their ideas and what they saw that trail looking like. I then reached out to Artie Bryson, who's here today, thank you, and I asked some questions about that area, if he knew any historic history behind it, if the sidewalk belonged to Clay Township, or if that was a school owned. I had no clue. So we had a nice, long talk, I looked for some help. Artie came up, we met with my students, we walked the trail together, he talked with the kids about their ideas, and that's when things really snowballed into a much bigger project. Artie put a post out on social media, and the next thing you know, people are calling me, they're calling Al, "How can we help? Where can we, we can give you some money?" We'll take it. I met with administration and members of the Elgin Act Lions Club and Elgin Act Rotary, the original founders of the trail. Together, we plotted out goals, funding ideas from the kids to make it better. Lions Club started helping by clearing the trail for me, which we can now utilize the whole trail system. Artie put me in contact with Caitlin Barnes, who tried very hard to make it here this evening. She's a biologist with the DNR. We began educating our students on the native plants and animals and invasive species that we have back there. Mr. Ranger from the high school reached out to me as well, offering his help with the Chick-fil-A Leadership Group, and asked if they could be any assistance. I opened them, I opened my arms and said, "Come on in." Together, we met with Caitlin and the ladies of the Friends of the St. Clair River for the educational component. We then scheduled our most recent meeting last week called the BioBlitz. A BioBlitz is a hands-on exploration where kids get dirty, and they saw firsthand all the wonders of this area. They identified insects, birds, plants, amphibians, mammals. The elementary students were partnered with the older kids who used technology to participate in an even bigger BioBlitz, and that began on Earth Day and ran until last week for the whole Great Lakes watershed area. So we partnered with people from Canada, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, all around. It was an amazing day of learning. A special thank you to Caitlin for teaching us about a BioBlitz. I will definitely be doing that again with my students. A huge shout-out to the Friends of St. Clair River, who brought ID cards, waders, those were a hit, so the kids could get into the water and see everything we have. Laura Chambliss, our math and science coach from RISA, also joined us. This was a, this is a massive project for a fifth-grade teacher, so I'm thankful for the support of my administrators, Mr. Latos, Mrs. Lestage, thank you for supporting me. Also, Mr. Melrose for allowing his students to come on over and work together with us. It's truly school and community coming together. A little history on this project, I was very curious, so I contacted the Historical Society, I did my own research online, but when I was a student at the junior high here, I won't even put a date on it, it was a while ago, it used to be a cross-country trail for that activity. It wasn't until 2007, 16 years ago, that it was developed into an outdoor classroom and trail under Dr. Dennis Geiser. The original project cost $40,000. $20,000 came from Waterfall USA, now known as St. Clair Flats Waterfallers. $5,000 from the St. Clair Community Foundation, and the rest from the Elgin Act Rotary. It is an 880-foot trail, it has a 10-by-12-foot dock, over the water retention pond, and seating for up to 40 students, along with a teacher podium, and there used to be benches along the trail that are in great despair. The progress that is currently being made, I have made contact with the Witherspoon family to see if we can work some Eagle Scout projects for some of the boys that are looking for some work to do. St. Clair Waterfallers have pledged $2,500 to restore the area, as they, too, were original founders of the trail system. The Rotary has pledged around $5,000 of support. The Lions Club has helped tremendously with the removal of dangerous trees and trees blocking the paths. They have also pledged to continue to help with any other items that may come up. I had applied for an EEF grant to help with the project, and Mr. Latos contacted me and said, "Let's save that money for indoor classroom use," and he said he'd help me however we can, and that is happening. I am currently working with Clay Township to help control motorized vehicle problem that we are facing back there. Chief Coach has assured us his support as well. Mr. Ranger Leadership Group is hoping to get back over there at Elgin, to do a spring cleanup, as we have many things that need to be cleaned up from, we have a garden club there that's cleaning up. They had tractor tires and some things that just was thrown into the woods. My current project that I'm currently working on is working a scoreboard and more. They reached out to me to see how they could help, too, and they're going to help me with some educational signage out there using the actual photos the students took the day of the BioBlitz. Some of my students' big dreams to improve the sidewalk is, in the, sorry, the sidewalk that is falling into the retention trail. I know Mr. Bryson is helping me with that as well. They also would like the idea of a storybook trail. We're looking into the cost of that as well. And new on our list, the kids really want some waders. Not all the kids get them. They didn't all get to get in them, and there were many tears about that, so that was a good time. Recently, my students were awarded the Green Guardian Award from the St. Clair County Earth Day Fair for efforts and dedication in environmental leadership. So I'm super proud of my kids because they motivated me, which motivated me to reach out to Artie, and he continues to support me as well and our students. I have some of my students here. I have Emmett over there, and Maddie back here. They just came to cheer on their teacher and be part of this, because I'm really stunned from them. So thank you.
On behalf of the school board of the district, glad for your classroom in honor of the project, and again, just, you know, for the board, you know, a teacher's life, especially in the spring, is crazy as it is, and for you to take this on, in addition to that, just says a lot about your dedication to the district and the kids, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. St. Clair School Board Association, Ella Sh.
Sophia, Mrs. Derbahn, come up here. So the St. Clair Association of School Boards, they award scholarships to students in St. Clair County. This year, they had 47 different applicants for their scholarships, and Sophia was awarded one of those scholarships. So I'm just going to read a little bit of her blurb from the press release. Sophia will be graduating in June from Elgin High School and plans to attend Central Michigan University while she will pursue a degree in cellular, molecular, and biomedical biology. After earning her bachelor's degree, she plans on attending medical school to become a psychiatrist and possibly work for, or open her own nonprofit organization that provides quality mental health care to people who cannot afford it. Sophia was very active in school by participating in varsity tennis, SAD, National Honor Society, Student Council, Care Bag Movement, Quiz Bowl, and College Ambassador. So that's all the technical stuff. Now, I've known Sophia for years, and she's one of the kindest, smartest, the happiest probably. (Applause) And along with that, they had to choose educator that inspired them. And if you know Mr. Derbahn, she just, the number one thing she does is build relationships with kids, and that's obvious. And it's Sophia, it's my daughter, it's all the kids, and she just does such a tremendous job, so congratulations. (Applause) And also a special shout-out to Mr. and Mrs. Nash, who are fantastic parents. (Applause)
Thank you. Congratulations. Good job. Part of this, I was part of this board of, not the association, and was the president for 16 years. This ceremony happened every year, it used to be at dinner, and there, one of the things that happened was the students received their scholarship, they had to pick who their educator that inspired them was, and at the event, they would have to stand up and say a few words about why they picked that person. I always made an appointment before all that happened, before everybody got really seated, to go to all the mentors, you know, these mentor, these mentor teachers, and I would ask them, "Did you know that kid would pick you?" And nine times out of 10, it's like, "I had no idea." You know, it was like, the kid came and helped me out and do this and that, whatever, I had no clue that. And so what I would always make sure to explain to those folks was, you could be having the worst day in your educational career. In your whole career, you could be having absolutely the worst day ever, and yet you could do one small thing that would inspire a child to make a life decision, like going into all the stuff that she'd be going into, and that speaks volumes about how honorable the profession of education is, so.
I'm going to pause right there because this is going to get deep over here. We've got Dean Transportation presentation. So one more time, I am going to give you guys the opportunity. (Laughter) The cookies are really good.
Congratulations. I got some pictures to send.
No offense, Peter.
Hallway pictures? Okay. Here's the books for anybody who wants some. Go ahead and take as many as you want. Send more down. Dig out. (Laughter)
Okay, back to the agenda and presentation. So on there tonight, we have the Teen Health Clinic, and that has been a cancellation, and I'll explain a little bit about why. A little unbeknownst to me, the process, as it was described, was they were going to apply for the grant, which we talked about over, well, a year ago, they were going to select two communities, which they did, and if you've read the press release that was out there, it was Elgin Act and Yale. Apparently, the one step that they kind of, I don't know if it was overlooked, or just maybe something that they thought was a done deal, was they had to take, the Health Department had to take this to their Board of Commissioners last week. And so Friday night, I got a phone call from the Health Department, and it kind of explained that it did not pass at that level. And a lot of what had taken place was, they had questions, they had some different things that they, more information that they requested. So I told them that it probably didn't do a lot of good to be here, we don't know exactly where we're at. And so kind of where that stands, we have a couple meetings, going back to the Board of Commission, to explain a little bit more about the project and that type of stuff. According to them, it's not a dead project, but just something that they're going to explain a little bit more. I told them that they're more than welcome to come out and be with our board in June or July, or whenever, you know, whenever they kind of get things straightened out on their end. So I will keep you posted on that. Again, I don't think it's a done deal, I just think it's going to be something that they need to do a little bit more of that work on their end. And that brings us to very last, but certainly not least, I cleared the room for bad meeting, so. Couple months back, and it's hard to believe that we are in, really, year 10 of our relationship with Dean. This is the second, second contract each five years, and I asked the board back in April if Dorothy and I could sit down and start to talk to Patrick about our contract, which expires in June, and I've been very clear with the board on the great things I think Dean's done for our district. We're very kind for their ability, and it just came down to, let's start talking about, you know, what this is going to, you know, cost moving forward, and are we looking at or into another relationship, another five years with Dean? And so I asked Patrick to come tonight because, you know, anytime we do this, and we're certainly within our legal rights to not have to bid this project out because we are looking to continue a relationship, but at the same point, I want the board to feel comfortable, I want the board, you know, some of the questions that you even asked on that night, where, you know, do we have schools that work, you know, that we can compare with to make sure that our next five years are going to look like something that's reasonable and in line with what the market says? So we did those things, we did the due diligence, we've met with Patrick, we've, Dorothy has been backing forth with them on certain things within the proposal that's in the board book. So I asked Patrick to come and talk a little bit about some of the things that we've been talking about over the last couple months, and I'll turn it over to you, Patrick.
Thank you, Superintendent. Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the chance to talk tonight and share a little bit about Dean Transportation. Pretty inspiring to hear all the students, so congratulations on all the success and all the accolades the students throughout the district have gotten. That's pretty, pretty awesome to see. I have young ones in elementary school. Every night's a battle for homework, so it's good to see the inspiration that can come as kids work through the education system, so congratulations. So again, I'm Patrick Dean from Dean Transportation, President of Dean Transportation. I'm proud to present on behalf of our team. So we have 25 folks, drivers, supervisors, mechanics, on-call staff that work on your behalf on Elgin Act every day. And I would invite any one of you and any one of you as kids work through the education system. So, congratulations. So, again, I'm Patrick Dean from Dean Transportation, President of Dean Transportation. I'm proud to present on behalf of our team. So, we have twenty-five folks, drivers, supervisors, mechanics, on-call staff that work on your behalf on Algenack every day. And I would invite any one of you and any one in the community to stop into the transportation anytime to say hi and say thanks. If you've been on a school bus, if you've ever been on a school bus, it's a pretty complex job to drive a forty to forty-five foot bus with sixty to seventy kids on it from time to time and navigate traffic in potholes and let alone the sixteen inches of snow we get in the wintertime. So, if you get a second, we'd welcome you to stop one of our drivers or our office staff to say, hopefully, thank you. Because being here every day as a school bus driver, really, they make a lot of things work behind the scenes and we're really proud of what they do. We've been proud to be here ten years. Hard to believe, ten years, how quick that goes by. Obviously, the last couple of years have been a significant challenge, working through COVID and all the things that we learned through that process. But we're proud to have a state-of-the-art fleet of equipment. And I know that's part of the proposal I'll talk about this evening. The state-of-the-art equipment with GPS tracking on it and some camera systems, a two-way infrastructure and a great mechanic and a lot of things that we do behind the scenes. We're also proud to work with RISA on the special ed side. So, behind the scenes, you may not know this, we show resources from time to time. It may be maintenance and maybe drivers, maybe helping with a field trip here and there. Our two offices between Marysville and Algenack support one another. So, it's kind of a regional collaboration throughout for RISA as well. But I wanted to acknowledge Kevin Russell, who's our Transportation Coordinator here. He was not able to come tonight. Apologies. He's up at four forty-five tomorrow to make sure all the district buses roll on the road. So, he respectfully asked if I would fill in for him tonight and he sends his best. He's been proud to work on behalf of Algenack, along with our office staff and our maintenance team. So, if you don't know much about Dean Transportation, I'd take five minutes to share a little bit of our story. So, we are founded in the nineteen fifties with a whole bunch of station wagons. So, if you remember the wood-paneled station wagons, that was Dean Transportation. It's a company called Special Transportation, founded by Lyle Stephens, who was a motor carrier police officer with Michigan State Police. And his goal was to help one student with polio to get to the Walnut Street School in Lansing. And that's how our business kind of started and grew from there. And then eventually, got a couple of school buses, nineteen seventies, we got more and more school buses. And we were all special education transportation until the early two thousands, when a lot of the financial crisis hit our state and a lot of logistics and changes happened in the transportation industry that took us more into general education transportation. So, today, we work with over a hundred different school districts throughout the state in various capacities. That's regional, special ed, could be just field trips, could be services like we do for you here, right in Algenack, all the way to Alpena and then over to Kent County and Ottawa Counties and then down to south of Detroit. So, we're kind of a big wheel that works together as a family business. So, I get the fortune to work with my dad, Kelly Dean, every day. My dad's a special ed teacher by trade, spent fifteen years in the Lansing School District teaching special education, was a special ed teacher and administrator before he took a leap of faith to get into the yellow school bus business with Lyle. And I joined my dad back in two thousand and seven, working on various things. Obviously, growing up in the school bus business and we have a lot of passion for what we do. It's not easy. Our teams work hard every day. In the last couple of years, it's even been tougher. You can read the news every day about shortages of school bus drivers, you know, a lot of different professions. But school bus drivers do have a shortage because of all the qualifications that go into them. DOT physicals, background checks, clearinghouses, start training, art version of start, which is an entry-level driver training mandated by the federal government. So, a lot of components to get a school bus driver on the road. Typically, it takes six to eight weeks to get your CDL from no experience to becoming a CDL driver. So, we're proud of our team and proud to work on behalf of Algenack. We're proud to present a proposal for the board's consideration, two different proposals, that extend our contract another five years. One of the things that we did back in two thousand and thirteen was invest heavily in equipment. At the time, I think the district was going through, it was a different time in funding for state and education and school buses were expensive. And so, we helped the district get into new school buses at the time and retire a lot of old ones. So, today, as buses age out, we replace them through what we call attrition, our attrition model. So, when they age out, we replace them with the new Dean provided bus. We've provided two proposals, one to continue that model and then the other to purchase the remaining vehicles of the district fleet, which there are five. So, we have thirteen Dean-owned buses that we provide on your behalf and five district-owned buses that make up the eighteen bus fleet for Algenack. We've proposed the ability for Dean to purchase the remaining five and then we'll be responsible for all aspects of those vehicles going forward. So, if an engine goes out or transmission goes out or maybe there's a large body repair or hole or whatever the case may be, we'll take on that responsibility in the school bus fleet. So, there's two considerations for you. In year four of the second version or the first version, the attrition model, we'll have met that eighteen bus, whole Dean replacement fleet. So, our proposal was to pre kind of replace the vehicles, given that in year four of this contract, we will have all eighteen. So, it's kind of a pre-arrangement. Under that, we would cut a check for the district, to the district in July for the remaining vehicles. We use the yellow school bus book, it's like the blue book on your car, to value school buses and use that to write a check to the district for the remaining fleet. So, that is outlined, I know in your board packet, there's a wealth of, a lot of detailed information. And our two financial proposals that we want to share, I've been through them with the district several times. Our industry, as we look forward, is also affected by the CPI percentages in our industry, so the inflation. One of the things that we've worked hard to do is extend our pricing out into multiple years and also work with our partners to lower costs. So, this new contract has kind of a baseline reset in year one and then gets back onto a traditional CPI of two point nine five percent in future years of all future four years from this year forward. Our balancing of costs and inflation and economics behind the scenes. But we sincerely appreciate the chance to work on your behalf. It's been a labor of love. Our team is proud to drive Algenack buses. We're proud to have Algenack on the side of each bus and proud to invest in more vehicles over the next couple of years for the transportation fleet. So, I appreciated the chance to share a little bit about these presentations, but I wanted to make sure I had the chance to answer any questions about Dean or Transportation or proposals as the board considers the two proposals.
I've got two, actually, quick ones. But the five buses that are district-owned, do we completely pay for and maintain those today? Or do we pay Dean for some of those?
So, right now, we pay for all maintenance on those. So, Dean pays for the maintenance expense for those.
Yes, okay. So, then the second question is, I noticed between the two proposals, there's roughly twenty-one K delta. Is that the valuation of the buses or is that part of the valuation of the buses? But then you're providing more in new buses that show up and take their place.
There's some efficiency for us, that's why it's lower, to purchase the buses and then be able to work with our partners to look at strategic purchases over the next five years. So, we're able to lower the cost a little bit with our purchase volume. And more strategic, we can plan for different timing of vehicle replacements if needed, move stuff around, those kind of things. That's why it's a little more efficient to have that flexibility for us.
So, after you buy the five, then from that on, you just rotate buses in and out? Just, it doesn't matter?
Correct, yep. So, we work to rotate buses. So, our goal is to have an average fleet life, average age of about seven years. So, a bus maximum life of fourteen years. So, we're shooting for all eighteen buses to have an average age of seven with some new buses and some maybe eight, nine, ten-year-olds. The older ones typically are only used occasionally for maybe a trip here or there or a sub-bus. So, that twelve to fourteen. At fourteen years, our buses are pretty much ready to be retired. It's not the engine, it's not the transmission. It's typically the body because of salt and wear and tear roads have on the body of the bus. So, that's the goal of an average fleet age of seven years. And that's spelled out, we do spell that out on our contract that says seven years average life, fourteen year max life. The other thing I would add too is that we have language in our current agreement and also continuing our agreement, if for some reason Dean didn't perform and the district needed access to its equipment, you would have access to your fleet of equipment. We don't want the district feeling as if it sold all its buses and didn't have access to buses in the future. And that's spelled out in our agreement as well.
Patrick, our last bus purchases in district, two thousand and nine, is that?
I think you have one fourteen left, which admittedly is the one that is giving us a little trouble right now. So, it's a twenty-fourteen and then it's twenty-twelve, twenty-twelve, twenty-eleven and twenty-eleven are the remaining district buses.
So, they're getting real close to that.
Do those five, so if you buy those five, do they stay in district for the rest of their lifecycle? Or do those go away altogether and then you replace them with different buses?
We would, we would replace them or we would continue to use them as status quo until which point we get like something that's a major repair and we choose to replace it then. They are projected to be replaced, not this year, but the next year. So, it's two, aside from any unexpected things, we have a replacement scheduled in year two of two buses, year three of two buses and then the last one, that twenty-fourteen, would go out in year four of the agreement. Likely, that one will pull forward because of some challenges we're having with it right now.
So, are you saying if our buses got too old and we didn't sell them to you, then we wouldn't have Dean drivers for all those buses and Dean didn't deem it safe to drive? What's, I was just trying to figure out what the benefit is of you guys purchasing the buses, what's the benefit to you?
So, for us, this is a model we have, we use in a lot of different districts. It allows us the ability to move buses around and more efficiently. So, if something were to, if a major repair happened, we could retire it earlier versus coming to the district and saying, you know, we need to invest twenty-five thousand dollars into a bus that's gonna only last for one or two years. Let us replace it with a Dean-owned bus in this year versus in two or three years. So, we get a better investment on the new bus versus repairing it and then only having a limited useful life left.
So, maybe as a follow-up question to that, in the first proposal, you're planning on swapping out those five buses in that schedule anyways, right?
Yes.
So, the opportunity between, with the second one is same plan, same schedule. It's just that those buses are now in your name, that affords you a bit more flexibility, thus the safety.
Correct, yeah. And maybe I can explain it this way. Both models at year four wind up being the same because we've replaced all the remaining buses with the district buses. The opportunity, I guess, we're proposing is to get equity out of those buses today, which then provides us the opportunity to work, collaborating with our suppliers and then our maintenance team to potentially replace some of those sooner, which lowers maintenance costs internally, also provides the district a new bus versus trying to run a twelve-year-old bus, you know, for a year or two more, if that helps. But they should both be equal to the same because we'll be all eighteen buses at year four.
In your blue, you call it the blue book version of the yellow bus. That, let's say the community reaches out, you know, down the road and says, did you get, prove you got a good deal when you sold the buses, right? I think that's kind of where maybe some of my questions come from. Is that a spec or something that's available to us so we can show, you know, demonstrate, well, due diligence was done this year, the health was looked at?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I think the district would also retain the right if you wanted to say, hey, Dean, just provide a new bus to us and we'll go out and auction off these buses. That could be an option you could consider too, behind the scenes if you liked. So, the yellow bus, yellow school bus book, as it's called, has been a good standard that we've experienced, you know, over the last fifteen, twenty years of where the markets have real buses. But the district would absolutely retain that right.
Do you, when you take those buses and those go back to you, okay, do you auction those buses and do you auction those off or do you put those, do you repair those buses and put them back into, into a life, into a cycle? What goes on with that?
Yeah, we, once they retire, we're retiring them. So, they typically are being recycled for salvage value or scrap metal at that point. There is some groups that will approach us to buy them and they'll part them out. There's been times where we'll take a hood off of an older bus and repurpose it. Maybe there's, you know, an accident, we have to put a new hood on a bus. The market has been so crazy right now. You know, you can scrap a bus for, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, but then you have to buy the same hood back for four or five thousand dollars off the bus you just scrapped. So, there's things like that that also, I think, are something that we see value in having older model vehicles that we can use to parts and efficiency that way too for other types of models.
I can provide the last two or three auctions where we received, where we auctioned the buses. It's not much, but it's around two thousand or less. When, is there a certain date that you have to retire them by law?
No, no. They, it would be, you know, they have to pass state police inspection annually. So, if they don't pass inspection, they don't go on the road. So, that's the inspection standard. And a lot of that, a lot of the impact of inspection is rust and cross-members and things that are underneath that a lot of folks don't see when you start taking the buses apart. So, that's what takes them out of the road on fourteen, fourteen-ish years. Dirt roads, dirt roads, wear and tear really, really are rough on our chassis.
Do you probably know, but do you pre-treat the underside of the buses?
We do, yeah. We do, yeah. They undercoat them and, you know, if seven to eight years, they'll warranty it and then you still get into, unfortunately, we just.
Make sure their parts weren't missed when they're done undercoating, they're inspected all the time for.
They are, yeah. And state police are meticulous in their inspection process. So, inspectors also go under there and they're crawling under and going, looking at each pinhole or loose. You know, it's usually a cross-member, so the cross-member underneath the wood floorboards will become loose and that'll be a red tag. So, those are things that have structural issues that put buses out of service.
And then when you do buy more buses, does our rate go up for when we use your services?
So, under our, when we provide a bus, there's a Dean-provided bus charge per day. And so, under the model where, under the model where Dean owns the entire fleet of equipment, if we had to replace, say, six buses instead of four buses, there's no increase in cost. So, we're taking on the risk of replacing vehicles. So, if one only lasts ten years, that's our risk, not any effect on the district. Under the current attrition model, if a bus were to, say, only last seven or eight years, we'd have to come back to the district and say, we need to rent or lease another bus. That would increase the cost. So, this helps flatline or stabilize the pricing. What it effectively does for those accounting, I mean, it straightlines the depreciation long-term for the fleet. So, there's an annual replacement cycle within the system.
So, basically, when we renew the contract, we're under the understanding that these buses will last for so long? And if that doesn't happen, it's at no detriment to us?
Correct, yeah. So, if a bus lasts nine years and we get a major engine repair and it can't go into service, we have to go out, buy a new bus, the pricing doesn't change to the school district. So, we're taking on that long. And we're also, given how many buses we operate, we know our, we know our, all of our weighted averages of what we expect. So, that's built into all of our pricing.
Thank you.
So, later on, in information items, we do have a, and this will come next month to the board, a suggestion or suggestion motion that really kind of follows the plan of selling buses. Again, if we're gonna be in the same spot four years from now, we know we're not gonna be able to auction, you know, and the difference of twenty-one thousand dollars, we know we're not gonna be able to auction the buses off for that amount. And we're able to move forward with having a few bucks extra, you know, to freeze the cost right now. You know, that would be my suggestion.
I know that there's talk too about including, this isn't half, but including bus costs in the future.
Yeah, you know, for us right now, even if we were able to use sinking fund dollars on buses and they made that change, you know, we're, I think the ship's kind of sailed, we're never replacing eighteen buses. You know, the costs would be astronomical. If you're looking to replace a fleet, you're going out for a full-fledged bond to do. If you're looking to replace a fleet, you're going out for a full-fledged bond to do so and not have the services of, uh, you know, somebody like the Dean Transportation. So, you know, taking all that back on. And I think definitely after the first contract was up, I think it kind of came to that board at that time and saying, you know, you realize if we are, that this is kind of like our getting off point. We're either getting out of the bus business or we're gonna, you know, stop right there.
And the opportunity at that time wasn't that great either because during that time, we were still going through the financial struggle of, um, the state legislature net increasing revenue to the districts, um, and making further cuts to the districts. We would be in no position to replace half of the buses to go, to move forward. So it only made sense to renew for the second five years.
So the future of busing with the, are, are we gonna be looking at electronic busing?
We're very supportive of electric EV buses. We have, um, we have a pilot deployment in Cadillac and we have also a number of other buses committed down. We're, the future electrification of school buses is coming quick, it's coming quick. Um, the last four years, we've jumped ahead probably 15 years in school buses. It's not gonna be every route today, um, but for, for a vast majority of routes, it, it will be a benefit. It will change the way how we manage, it will change how we, um, charge. One of the things that EVs is.
I was gonna say, it should be pretty cheap.
It's infrastructure, infrastructure costs, uh, charge management is where really the, the secret is. Um, the bus is the easy part, actually, that's the easy, easy part. It's how you get enough power to your facility and then when you charge. So can't charge everything all at once because that's too big a draw. So it's, there's a, there's a lot, I could spend four hours on that. That said, there's a lot of opportunities with the quality for the drivers, quality for the students, having less noise environment, which ultimately will have hopefully better behavior on buses because there's not as much stress of the environment and noise, better air quality and there's a trickle down effect, um, of it. So we're really supportive and excited about it. A new, uh, electric school bus, just, you may know this, but is about $400,000 for one bus. And it'll last, last hopefully 14 years. Uh, batteries may be a little less at this point until technology changes. By comparison, a regular diesel bus, uh, is about $125,000. So federal government put in $5 billion, $5 billion for a clean school bus. But it's only gonna, it's only gonna address a fraction of a fraction of the entire school bus fleet nationally, so.
So it should be a pretty cheap fix then, right?
So it's, it's, uh, it's exciting, but yeah, without additional support from state or feds, it's, it's a very challenging, uh, question.
It's interesting too, because I think they know that that's, you know, when, when you start to talk about even, funding at the state level and, you know, when they talk about schools being underfunded, that they are right now, and then adding that cost, because they, that's the one thing they don't factor in until just, the conversations just started about that on, you know, they, they look at per pupil, future books, whatever, they don't factor in that cost, you know, and they need to start doing that.
Michigan, I'll share, that stuff in my EV platform, but is a leader nationally, which is really exciting to see. Uh, Michigan was an early pilot program through Michigan Association of Pupil Transportation Group that really led efforts nationally, state of Michigan, uh, and, and departments have been supportive of EV. Again, very expensive, it's expensive everywhere in the country and world. But there is some, school bus is probably the best use case where we go, we stop, we come back, charge, go back out every day at the same location. So lots more to come, we've got a team, uh, we've spent considerable resources planning, so as opportunities come, we'll, we'll reach out and, and talk about it. Uh, DTE, uh, consumers, uh, and, uh, Fort Water Light, Wolverine Power, uh, state of Michigan utilities have been great to, to step forward to, uh, on many projects, so, so more to come on that, so.
One more question, are you guys talking about, um, trying to add more accessible lifts? Is the standard in, in the buses?
We are, yes, yep, we're, uh, we're looking at some, some changes to lifting systems and improvements. Part, partly some of the buses we're looking at here as well, uh, for replacements too.
Anything else from Patrick?
Really appreciate spending time with those.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you, thank you all.
You don't need to stay.
Grab a cookie.
You're on camera, drive safely.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again, Patrick.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, moving right along here, we have consent agenda items, would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approves of consent agenda items, including agenda minutes, personnel items, treasures, reports and bills as listed items.
It's important, it's important, any questions?
Mrs. Rowland was still here, so we could have thanked her.
Well, we'll have an opportunity, we are doing a, uh, retirement get together. Yeah, as you see on there, um, you know, three longtime employees, uh, you know, my grand came in around the same time I did and, and Mary and Chris have been here for quite a while and been big parts of the district and, um, certainly, you know, we will honor them again at, at the retirement party, but, um, yeah, and, and just, uh, just really a, a scene.
Mr. Latos, I just want to let you guys know that Lauren's actually here, so to introduce you guys.
Thank you, that's, that's one of the positives, we have Lauren coming to us. Roseville, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, she's gonna be, uh, coming in as a fourth grade?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade teacher. So, um, we're, we're in the process, like I said, of, as we have some retirees, we are in the process of at least being able to, um, replace them with some quality teachers and some teachers with experience. Lauren just moved out here recently, right?
Yep, a couple of years ago, been waiting for the perfect opportunity to fit into the district. I just love everything about the area. My daughter goes here and I'm just, I'm very excited to be here with her.
I'll say that. That's positive, thank you.
Yep.
Can we vote on that, I lost you.
Yeah, we did, no, we just have, we just.
All those are favorites, yeah. Any votes?
Okay.
Now you're good.
Thank you.
Close. All right, I'm first, uh, Moody's credit summary.
Yep, um, I'm, I'm gonna let, um, we, we've brought this a little bit to you, but I wanted to wait until, um, Dorothy was here, which you can, right? Because this is a lot of what Dorothy does and, you know, keep in our, they'll keep our district stable financially. You know, this is one of the, a Moody's rating is huge for us for a lot of reasons, um, you know. Our, our credit rating when we were at, you know, back down in the 2.1% fund balance days was, uh, took a real hit. And just like your probably personal credit, if you take a real hit, it takes a long time to get back, to have a decent credit rating. We've worked pretty hard with, uh, you know, a couple of times, it, at least talking to Dorothy, I kind of felt like, man, maybe, felt like we were doing so well and we still hadn't gotten to where we, we wanted to get to. And so for the first time, uh, certainly since I've been in this seat, first time in quite some time, we're in a pretty good spot. So Dorothy, you wanted to talk a little bit about that?
So Moody's and standards was evaluate us. And when, when I first came, we, we had an A2 rating. And then we went down into the Bs, B, B, B. Finally, we made it back up to an A3 rating and that is great. That, if we ever need to bond, do bond issues, borrowing, that matters because then we will have better bonds. So, um, it just took forever to get back to the A, years, but we made it, so. It, it, it's quite interesting that we, you know, uh, what they determine, you know, our possible, you know, outliers for strengths and weaknesses and, uh, we've been beat up pretty bad in, in prior years, so.
Yeah, we did. You know, the, the whole, the interview process with Dorothy and I and whoever our, our person is on that end, doesn't take real long, takes maybe 45 minutes, but sometimes it's pretty painful and you, you know that the questions that you're answering, you know, and they start talking about population because they have all the numbers and they start talking about that and those are things that all pan out. In fact, your, your rating when you're looking at the school finance and, um, you know, there's been times where I tried at that phone call and at that meeting and, so, um, no, I bet it's a good thing, it's a good thing for the district, so I want to make sure that we talk at least a little bit about that tonight, so. The old policy update, so, uh, this will be, uh, the second rate tonight and then also we'll be taking action on that. Lo and behold, I already got a phone call from Wayne about our next one. It feels like I do these, you know, a month and a half. And that one, I did talk a little bit about the, um, artificial intelligence policy with the chat PPT. That's gonna come up again, um, and so we're, we're gonna at some point have to talk about how we're handling it in the district. They have some policies in place that I think that, uh, that will probably bring to you a little bit more because I think we really need to look at that. It's gonna be a big thing coming, uh, for the next few years. Want to make sure we have a pretty good understanding of that because I think we'll get challenged on those things.
Are there, are there interventions or other ways to, uh, to, uh, manage what happens with this AI in, in school districts? I mean, it's, you know, do administrators or, I mean, is there, is there something out there? It's like, here's how you do this, is there, is there one of those programs for districts?
Yeah, it, it, there is, um, you know, it's like who's ahead of who, right? And, and so, yeah, there is and there, there, there's some stuff out there currently. But it, it's like anything, Andy, as soon as you figure out how to decode what they're doing, they're onto the next thing almost. So it'll be a game, probably a cat and mouse for, you know, years to come. And I, I think it's just gonna be a matter for our district, how we look at it. Can you embrace some of that stuff? It's learning to, I, I mean, there's a lot of different ways. Yeah, or to, right, you know, I mean, but you're black and you're, you know.
Yeah, all of these are.
Yeah, and so, um, a lot of, lot of stuff to, uh, look at, but, um, you know, those things I'll keep a little bit closer on.
I read an article that, you know, it was a college professor, the whole class turned in, you know, turned in papers about something and he determined that it was able, was able to find out for sure that every single one of them had been done with that AI stuff. And so everybody failed.
Well, in some ways, I mean, like research and stuff, you can see it, it's very hard to do.
It's not only our industry, it's not even the education, now the music industry is really everything. It's everything, everything to me.
It doesn't have, yeah, you know, we look at it as being naughty, right, in the school world, but it doesn't have to, I mean, there, there's probably some positives that come from that, so. Transportation contract, again, um, you know, I, I appreciate, yeah, um, having faith that Dorothy and I had talked with Dean a little bit about that. Um, you know, the process of going out and bidding those things, and I certainly would do it if I thought it was gonna be a savings to the district and it was gonna be a quality project that we got back in return. The last time we went out, it, it was a lot of work and a lot of, um, you know, again, people bidding that weren't ready to bid on that, people bidding that weren't from this area, logistical companies that are gonna try to piecemeal it together. The one thing I can say about Dean is I've never, in terms of contracting with somebody, you know, what Patrick represents and what he talks about with his family, um, they, they're legitimately in it for kids. You know, you talk about his background, started as special education, transportation, they truly are the heart of their kids. When you have a problem or you have a presentation, that's the president of the company coming down and talking. You know, when I make a phone call because something's not going right, it, he's two phone calls away and his dad's three phone calls away. So there, there are people, again, I have full faith in that group, I have full trust in them and I feel pretty good even about the numbers that we got when you look at the increases over five years at 2.95%. Today's day and age, that's, you know, it's pretty darn good considering everything that we're looking at and how inflation is what it is. So again, I, I don't see any reason to go any, with any kind of a different group and I think that the proposals that he gave you, you know, even if you wanted to go or the group felt we needed to go with the one where we don't sell the buses, you know, to me, it's either one of them we're winning on, the other one, we just put a few bucks in the pocket.
For both you and Dorothy, though, you agree with.
I agree and we would get $21,000 for those six buses if we don't have, so it's.
Didn't, didn't you guys buy one years ago?
Yeah, I bought one years ago and.
Less than $1,000.
Less than, yeah, I think we paid, I think, $500 for it. And you know, he's right, it's usually, the buses normally, with Tyler's knowledge when he was working, was they rot out from underneath and usually it's a cross member. And that bus, that's what happened, we had to do away with that bus. And we had a handicap lift, remember that from Friday, handicap lift and everything in it. And it finally died and the reason was the cross members went out in the wood floor, the flooring just ruined it. And that was in 2000, was that, nine, was it 99? I think that was in 99 or 2000. That was one of our bus, one of our associates. They don't last long.
Love us.
So not a money maker?
What's that?
Not a money maker, so.
Not a money maker, no, not at all. And you'll never, you know, and you've got, how many buses are going up?
Six.
Six, so you figure if we got, say, $5,000 at the mass.
Right.
Except when we're on there, I can sign, like, three years' worth of what we auctioned off at war, but I don't recall anything over 2,000.
I don't think.
We're getting a little more, but.
So you get the benefit of making a little bit more money and we're insulated.
Yeah.
People are turning them into campers, but, and stuff like that. But I get his point why he's stated doing this is he's right. If he scraps it, you know, the buses, the parts alone are worth to him, are worth to him if he has to.
Hey, it's worth to him, I'm not hard to make a guess, but I just think we need to also be diligent that, you know, when we have nothing to use and we're relying on other people, which we're really doing anyway, but then if they do also go electronic and then the prices go way up and you don't know, I'm just saying, just to look at every bit of it and make sure that when they do re-approach, when it is time to sign again, that you just keep watch that they're not gonna try to, not saying they would.
No, no, in fact, we asked for, we asked for Dorothy, we've got a couple of bike schools, two districts our size too. Because we wanted to make sure that, you know, they, they seem like they're always pretty honest, but you want to make sure that you're getting the same rate as somebody else.
Because you think about taking on a junky old bus, like, obviously it's working for you because you're gonna get the tiny profit off of it by being able to swap off parts. That's great, but eventually you're not even gonna be using those buses anymore, you know what I mean?
Our, our next go around will be a little bit different.
Yeah, some of the buses that we've auctioned off recently don't even run. And he's right, in the area of $1,500 if they scrap.
So that will be, uh, action item for next month.
Administrator reports, Ms. Rose?
Yes, uh, so we had, uh, finished up the, the state testing with the PSAT, SAT and, uh, and M-Step, uh, a couple of weeks ago and now we're in, uh, NWA, uh, testing for the, the third and final session of that for the, for the kids. We, uh, last week did a band concert, the band sounded fantastic at the concert. Uh, this, uh, this past weekend, NHS had their color run, uh, successful, raising money for, for Mr. Bowman and, and fighting cancer and again, our, our board president coming in second there in the run, so good job. And then also this weekend, uh, the senior only party, we had that, uh, on Saturday. So the committee did a fantastic job and it was, Pascal was really involved in that. And it was, the, the kids were so well behaved, they were busy the whole time. I did hear one kid whine the, the, the whole session there and it was just really successful. Again, I just think that the, the parents involved in a fantastic job. Uh, right now, NHS is running a food drive, uh, we're trying to, uh, refill the blessing boxes both in Almac and Clay, so they're, we're currently in the midst of that. Uh, seniors last week is this week and then, uh, June 1st, kind of have, it's gonna, it's kind of be a full middle school themed day here. Uh, we're gonna have the eighth grade awards, that's gonna be in the morning on, on, on the first, uh, the first hour. And then we're gonna be doing our sixth grade orientation here during the day, kids will have lunch here. Then we're gonna do a little. Then we're going to do a little something different this year. We're going to have to do like a scavenger hunt to find some stuff like that, try to make it fun for them. And then that night will be the dance. And again, the sixth graders aren't avoiding here for that dance. And I know last year they were a really good time. June eighth is that's when we have our our graduates come from the practice. Then they also do the walk through the elementaries. And then June ninth is our senior awards and graduation. And off the presses, our our baseball team beat North Branch tonight. Richmond lost, and we're officially the B Y champions.
And one other color run clarification. I did take second, but John sprinted the whole thing.
Yes. In my mind. I walked it, but the whole time I was sprinting.
Did you have your shirt on or your chain leg?
Um, we too just finished up our M step testing. We've identified some areas that we did pretty well in, but also some areas that we need to get to work on, you know, starting right at the beginning of next year. Each year, the P T O sponsors a best effort reward for our students. And typically, we get bounce houses. So those will be coming on June fifth and sixth. And the teachers will identify students who put forth their best efforts, not connected to if they passed or not. It's just if they really tried and they get an opportunity to spend about an hour per class in the bounce houses. Sixth grade band performs tomorrow evening. And on Thursday, our sixth grade performing arts perform during the day and in the evening. And our sixth grade recognition will be at two o'clock on June ninth. Anybody who would like to come out, it's really a fun time. And the kids do like some mock awards at the end that are spot on and pretty cute. So that's fun. Mrs. Tavares says continue to do sturgeon education with our fifth grade students. And on June second, they'll be going up to Fort Huron on the Huron Lady to take a little tour and and learn about that. But the really cool thing is they submitted artwork and there were seven hundred submissions in the county this this year. And only ten finalists, and five of the ten are Algonquin students. So there will be some online voting going on, and I'll push out those links as soon as possible. So hopefully we can spread the word. And that is Chael, Emels, Mackenzie, Shannon, Lily, Fraser, Andrea, Cordell, and Abby Sparker. And also, we will be having the fourth graders go to the zoo in June. Third graders will be going to Greenfield Village and second graders take a two day community field trip. So we're pretty busy.
Oh, my goodness. Well, Millside is in full swing with their alphabet countdown towards the end of the year. So every day is something new, depending on which letter. So kids are very, very excited about that. We have a bunch of transition days going. So our special education students are working on transitioning into kindergarten as well as into second grade at multiple dates with their families coming over and looking. Our first graders will be going over, I believe, June sixth over to Algonquin. They're getting very nervous. So they want to go see everything, but they're ready. We have G S R P coming over to do transitions on June fifth to Millside. So getting ready to welcome lots of new students and sad to say goodbye to some of our first graders that are so old now. May thirty first, first grade goes to Upland Hills Farms. June first and second, kindergarten goes to Pine River Nature Center. So lots going out there. We are in the midst of doing our end of the year reading testing. So this is a very exciting time at Millside because we have so many readers that are just so proud of themselves. Mrs. Mahala did our kindergarten music performance in the beginning of May. It was, it doesn't matter what they do. They're always super cute up there. They did a great job. The staff would like to say thank you for all the staff appreciation for the first week of May. They truly appreciated everything. They had a great week from whether it's the administrative school board or our P T O. They were truly and community outreaches too coming in. So we had lots of great gifts, lots of pulling together there. At Millside, we're looking at a transitional K program this year and what that might look like. So I think we have enough to run that. So I'll bring more information to you on that. We're still collecting numbers for summer school. We're going to do a final push to make sure that we have kids that are going to be joining us this year for summer school. And on the curriculum forefront, E L A met again today and have narrowed it down to three different curriculums they want to spend more time looking at. Math at the high school will be getting some materials to check out as well. And we are looking at a math intervention program that is Alex that's been, it was actually developed at the high school level and then brought down. We struggled to find great math interventions that's going to meet our kids' needs. So this is one that we're going to check into and see if that is what we need. It it changes for every student based on what they do. So it's a little different than we've had in the past. So I'm curious to see how it works. It is being used by some of our districts close to us. So being able to look and see what that looks like as well. So we'll see.
Millside, how so it's the first year that the science curriculum's gone through, how to vet?
I haven't done the survey for the teachers yet. I can only tell you just what I'm hearing. The kids are enjoying it. So I see they're making things, they're experimenting with things, they're going out there, they're loving lots of different things. Teachers are enjoying teaching it. I think anytime you do something new, it's scary, right? So they're like, oh, there's so much, there's so much in the technology. What if this doesn't work? What? So it's some of those things. So we'll do a survey about how it went and what they feel that they still need moving forward. Elementary science is always hard because they feel like they have to do so much reading and math that where do they fit that in? So I think the fact that the students are enjoying it makes that a whole lot easier to try to say this is important. I need to get this done. So I'll I'll get some survey results out. I might know exactly what they still need.
How's kindergarten roundup go?
It it went well. We have them still trickling in. So right now, we're in the low eighties for next year, which is is it's on the, well, it was running average. Last year was a big group that came in. And then this year, we keep having people call. So I don't know, you know, how we can get this out to them. We send postcards out, we put it up, we send it through a newsletter. So I'm hoping typically in the summer, we pick up about ten more. So we'll see. If you know anybody, send them my way at all. But we are going back through emergency cards. I have reached out to the daycare again to say, hey, send me the list of all of your four year olds. Like, I want to make sure that we're not missing it. Even if they're out of our district, if they're coming to you, I want to see it. We want to continue coming down here. So.
Mr. Melrose, you had set out something regarding the kids having like a college night, middle school and up to tenth grade or something, with college advisors and starting like middle school. Yeah, it was a college night. It was introducing kids to what their future might look like, what they might be thinking about.
That, um. I think it was Miss Tennis would have sent that out.
Is it? Oh, so they're gonna, it's new though. And that's why this tennis was so awesome. She's going to get the kids thinking about in junior high about what they might think that, you know, they might be interested in in the future just to get their thoughts geared toward advancing. So I just thought that that was great.
College for Muskrat's Family Info Night.
Yeah, Family Info Night.
All eighth to eleventh grade students.
Yeah, eighth to eleventh grade.
She's just so great.
Oh, she is. She is. Mrs. Tennis was fantastic. She's done a great job.
And she also helps not only the college, but the class as well.
Yeah, that's nice.
All right, no Dana tonight. So bringing us to board reports.
Jen, you gotta get your packets.
Oh, yes. They got the packet. Oh, you're asking on the very one for the the pamphlet we got from M A S B with all the Congress people and what groups that they're in, phone numbers and things like that. So you could all go get one of these tonight. Also, when I was at the St. Clair County Association of School Boards meeting last time, and we were going through the scholarships, we talked about increasing what what we pay right now, six hundred dollars for each district to be involved in that. So we just thought about raising it to eight hundred. That way, every district, we can give scholarship to one student from every district. So increasing the yearly.
How many would that so that would be? How many were?
So there's eight. So so right now, there's only four. So if we went up to eight hundred, it would be, yeah, then we could give one, one thousand to each district. Because sometimes it's really hard. Yeah, each, yeah, each, yeah, each senior. So it's very hard. We said that for like an hour and a half, but I'm going through it. So.
So the amount awarded stays the same?
The amount awarded stays the same, but the recipient will increase from four to eight.
When our program started twenty thirty seven years ago, it was, I could say it was a sit down dinner. And a student, a senior from every high school got a scholarship, presented their mentor, said a few words about it. And they got, everybody got six hundred dollars. And a lot of the money that was coming in, local districts pay six hundred bucks a year to the association to cover the costs of postage and whatever and stuff for M A S B and materials for the board. And they do like a box lunch type of a lunch when we have the three meetings a year. And stuff for the general membership meetings, the dinner for the general membership meetings. And a lot of that money back in the day, Pepsi did a thing with pot machines. And they would they would pay districts, we had it here too, and they had it at Risa. They would pay you to have pot machines in your buildings. And so Risa gave that, it was I S D back then, Risa gave that money to county association schoolers. So that helped us to be able to give every kid in the county, at every every high school, a senior, their scholarship. And that contract ended then when he went away. And that's when the dinner went away. Every every high school get a scholarship. So it's good to see the table that has come.
Yeah, and it hasn't been raised. She said it's never, it's always been six hundred. So.
It was always six hundred.
We'll be voting on that in September, but everyone seemed in favor of doing that.
I do have one I owe everyone a bit about a policy I brought up in the last meeting, a suggestion for a collaboration evening for one on. And it ended up being a very crazy month. And even looking forward to next month, I went over my calendar, guess today. I have like two free nights in the next. So maybe all offer to the group is Wednesday or Thursday next week. If that works, we can we can meet then. Or I would suggest we just defer until our July special meeting anyways. We can do our normal goal setting and everything. We can fit it in there.
I'd say do it in July.
Yeah, we can do it as a special meeting. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Tosh.
Just a couple of things for you. If you noticed tonight, we have a different different man guy, the camera here today. Just we've been talking with, you know, some community members reaching out and some that don't get to the meetings or aren't capable of getting to the meetings. And some people we have actually live out of state that want to keep up with Almac a little bit. You know, we never intended, you know, I begged Evan to come and do this. We were never equipped with the equipment that you would need to put on a quality video. I just asked that he did it because there were some people. And then obviously, like during COVID, we wanted to make sure that we got that out there. With always the idea that A, we're going to have to invest in a bunch of equipment to do this, to do it the right way. Or B, hire someone that knows what they're doing. So tonight, we have the first of this will be our new way of doing videos. So thank you very much for coming. Nothing really new on the budget to report in terms of from the state level. They're they're in the same spot where we're starting to, although next week, I assume it'll lamp up a little bit. They'll be starting to discuss and take some, you know, get into committees and starting to talk a little bit more about the nuts and bolts. But like I said, I I still think we're in a good spot. The appropriations committee that met last week was interesting because the numbers did not come back as favorable for the state. Doesn't necessarily affect the school aid fund. It probably won't affect it at least this year, but maybe down the road a little bit. And that might be something that's trending the wrong way. So we'll have to keep an eye on that. Negotiations, we'll talk about closed session going well. I'll tell you where we're at with that stuff. And then lastly, Wednesday, Ryan and I are meeting with Pat Yanick on the marine tech program that we're hoping to get rolling. We just want to make sure that we're keeping keeping that going where it doesn't fall. If we knew we wouldn't have it in place for the twenty three, twenty four school year, we're hoping to have it beyond that. So Ryan and I will be meeting with Pat Monday morning or Wednesday morning. That's it.
Have you been, have you been, have you had or anybody been in touch with County Green? Because they said they had resources from Mercrezer and all kinds of stuff to whatever you need.
Yeah, I know.
We need those people.
Yeah, no, and we will be, you know, I know originally, this was back when we first started talking about it. And T J had said something, you know, right to you. But but yes, we will be getting back with them. Because we need to, you know, the idea is to locate at least one, if not more, that want to, you know, work with us. So yeah.
They want to give us stuff.
And start a program. We'll probably take it.
All right. Any visitor requests? None. Bringing us to action items. Our first up is the volleyball team building overnight request.
I want to have the Board of Education approve the overnight team building exercise for the high school volleyball program from July twenty sixth to twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Expenses will be paid by the parents. There will be no cost to the district.
Support it. Any questions? All those, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Next up is our Neola policy updates, volume thirty seven number two. We've had your readings on. Anyone like to make a motion?
We'll make a motion. The Board of Education approved the Neola policy updates, volume thirty seven number two as presented. List will be attached to the minutes.
Support it. Any questions? Although the fairs say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes as well. Bringing us to our Risa and tech program budgets. Anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education have received a review of the proposed St. Clair County Risa budget for twenty twenty three, twenty four. Adopt the resolution as presented, expressing its support or disapproval of the approval of support of the proposed budget. The copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original. Support.
Support it. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next is the recent twenty twenty three biennial election. Anyone like to make a motion? I'll take that one. But to make a motion that the Board approves the resolution as presented, designate. Wait, Ryan.
Yeah, Ryan, you just got to figure it out.
Why don't we?
So who have been our representatives in the past?
I don't know that. Who replaced Ray? Does Ray always see Ray once?
So we need a primary and an alternate.
Because she was our person on the.
Yeah, I can do that.
So Jen, primary. And is anyone interested as being an alternate?
I'll be the alternate if nobody else wants to.
All right, Jen, handy. And then we need to support tickets for a term of six years. So any suggestions I can? It's just work.
This is Mr. Ryan.
Yep, it's Ryan, Mr. Nicole. Yep, it's, yeah, it's Ryan, Mr. Nickel.
They're both incumbents from the same position.
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
There's one candidate for the seat that represents, for our district, and one candidate for the seat that represents the key there. So they're not both running for the same seat?
No, the, the recent board, which was back, even back when it was the ISD board, there's a representative from, I think there's two from Port Huron, one from the Old West, one that's like East China, Algonac, and there's Marysville and something, it's like, so they're split up by kind of territories in this, in this spot. So when somebody comes up, jokes for re, to reelection, or they decide not to run, they were representing that area, that's the, that's the spot that will be filled by whoever is running. These two gentlemen apparently are already in those particular spots and are running to stay in those two spots for Port Huron and for Yale.
And they're the only two spots. Two people for the only two spots.
Two people for two spots. Ken Nickel was the superintendent of Yale for quite a while.
And would Jen then vote even though we're not members of those two particular districts?
No, yes. You're voting for, you're voting for recent board members is just, you know, the side part, those board members are representing those areas. When we've had an Algonac person be on for the recent board, that, well, everybody else voted for them too. I think right now, that seat, because it's Algonac, East China, and I might want to say Marysville, but I don't think so, I'm not sure. But right now, that is not filled by an Algonac person, that is filled by an East China person.
All right, so let's try this again. I'd like to make a motion that the Board approves the resolution as presented, designating Jen as the district's representative to service on the 2023 Electoral Body, responsible for electing members of St. Clair County Board of Education, with the idea as an alternate. Board supports candidates Jeffrey Wine and Kenneth Nickel for a term of six years. A complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support.
Supported, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes, that was a tricky one. Oh, next we've got our resolution for setting the public hearing on 2023, 24 budget for Monday, June 26, 2023.
I motion that the Board of Education approves the resolution as presented, setting the date and time for the public hearing on the proposed 23, 24 budget for Monday, June 26, 2023, at 6:15 PM, in the Algonac Junior Senior High School Library. Notice of the public hearing to be published as required by law. A complete copy of this resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support.
Supported, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes. Next up is our food service contract approval. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Education approves the one-year renewal for 2023, 2024 school year, which Chartwell's for food services as presented.
Support.
Supported, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes. And last on the list is the Chromebook purchase. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to request the Board approval to purchase 200 HP Chromebooks, 14 G7s, and 200 Google licenses and SEHI computer products, A, REMC contractor, contractor provider in the amount of $55,196.
I have a question.
Yep.
We already have Chromebooks.
Yep. So we are, you know, when we hit the COVID era, and we had to purchase about 900 of them in one year, it's a big cost to the district. So these are actually the ones that we had purchased prior to COVID. And so they, they are cycling out. And if, if you say average lifespan for a Chromebook is about three to 40 years, I think these are on year five. So going forward, we'll have probably 200 on each year to try to frame that cost where we're not stuck by 900 in one year. And so this is really the first in terms of replacement cost of the old models that will be going out. And again, they'll probably take place, and there's so, so we have some that are, obviously some, I mean, some that are outdated, but this is kind of the replacement plan going forward. So that way, again, we don't get stuck with a one year of a thousand purchase.
What do they do with those Chromebooks? Do they go out garbage?
I mean, it's, it's tricky, because you gotta, it actually costs, you know, you have companies that are willing to come in and buy them sometime, but there's, there's no money to be made recycling, recycling. Yep. They don't charge you to do it.
So is it, is it cost effective to continually buy more Chromebooks every four years? Try and find something that'll last longer than three to four years?
It's, it's really the, I mean.
Your, your average laptop portable is, you're lucky to get four years probably on average anyways, five years at the most in a school setting.
Are they all using the Chromebooks in the classrooms?
Yep. No, I, I think, I think we get a little lot of use out of them, as far as I'm concerned. I, I mean, your only other alternative is to go, you know, like we had done for years with labs. But, you know, the, the cost of those is crazy, a lot of money. And we're finding out that we probably get more use of the ones that are in classrooms and portable, so.
Are they able to use, I know Chromebooks are limited in their use. Are they able to use the Chromebooks for the curriculum that they need?
And, and I would say yes, and even probably for us, what's kind of important is being able to use for testing. You guys probably could talk a little bit to that. I mean, getting use out of them.
Absolutely. So, I mean, some teachers use it more than others, but they're, they're all being used. And like you said, it's with everything that we do now on Google, as it is, that's, it fits right in with the kids and.
So it's on web-based too, so they don't have to download less. So it's all running smoothly with the Chromebooks? It's giving them what they need?
Yes.
You're getting a unit price of like $275 for a laptop.
Who adopted one? Was that who adopted one? Because he says he'll.
He can get an old Windows XP.
All right, support.
Yeah.
And then one, one last comment for REMC, a little bit of background is, that's like a, a master contract database that says, as long as you're getting, you know, picking from this list at these prices, it qualifies as a competitive bidder basically.
Yes.
And the other one, SEHI? SEHI, it's like, oh, S, yeah. SEHI, I think it's a reseller.
Sehi, beautiful.
Yeah, they're a reseller.
Boy, yeah, the REMC bid process, REMC's on the.
I'll help you with the scientific words, you know.
It scares the real educational media.
Thank you, yes. Oh, I know it as, as long as it's REMC, we're good. All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. And with that, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education goes into closed session at 8:45 PM to discuss negotiations. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I saw this. I'll talk to you when.